Good evening. We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees to meet to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It's Tuesday, November 12th, 6:30 PM. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to begin tonight with Connersville Middle School. Just sit down.
They really aren't that shy. First of all, I did want to quickly say that the slides that were up there, I don't know how they went off, Cindy, I don't know how they went off. But anyway, those were our students that were at Washington U.C., just over fall break, and were able, they got the opportunity to put the wreath on the end of Soldier's Monument. And that's the first time our group has been able to do that. I think the four students we had were all eighth grade, Jasper, Martin, Marshall Hensley, and Cody Naylor, and Carly Westerfield. So I know they were flashing through, but it was just an awesome experience. It was raining on that Sunday, actually, when they did this, so they were out in their suits and ties, but it was worth the wait and worth being out in the rain, so. But tonight, we're here to talk to you about some highlights from Connersville Middle School, and we really appreciate the opportunity to highlight our school. I have with me two of our student presenters, Clara Burles and Sophia, and they are going to help talk through some of the slides we presented or that we prepared. Mrs. Peck is also with us tonight. She's a seventh grade language arts teacher and their teacher as well. So we felt like tonight might be a good opportunity to share with the board and the community really all about reading at C M S, because I think sometimes we know that reading is a real focus at the elementary, but I don't think they realize how much of a focus it is also turned to the secondary. So we thought we would just share with you all of those reading initiatives and opportunities that our students have on a day-to-day basis in different venues throughout. So if you want to give me the wireless, I don't mind clicking, or you can. Thanks. We're kind of apolo- being a little bit sorry. So one thing, we kind of broke it into a couple chunks. So we talked about how our students have an opportunity to read in the classroom. I'm just kind of briefly showing you some of these, and if you have some questions, I'd be glad to entertain those later. We have SSR, which we call sustained silent reading, or you can call it self-selected reading, because our students do have an opportunity to read their choice of reading material for about 30 minutes every Wednesday. And that is for everyone in the building, so that is the expectation. We try to very much protect that time from any complications or meetings, so that our students truly see that we're putting an emphasis there and a priority on their reading. We have weekly media center business for all of our students every week to either read new or select new books. Those are actually, go from one class, usually one core teacher per week, so there's actually five teachers on each team, so that it rotates. We have close reading that is across the curriculum in each content area that our teachers have had professional development. We work a lot with this to try to take more of that difficult text at their grade level in many cases, to try to understand how to work through that material, most of it being nonfiction, so that they are understanding since that is the text that they have the most difficulty with. And they work with strategies on how to learn to close read an article, so all of our content areas, that's an expectation as well. Also, we use Storytime in the media center, so we try to hit all of our students in all different classrooms. And we also use the Public Library and Bookmobile for some of our students in our life schools, so they have a great selection for them as well. We use an enrichment and R T I period of time, which is focused on reading and writing. That is taught by Mrs. Durkman, and we identify students that need to close some gaps, need to build some skills to continue to be successful with their reading in other areas. We also have a fundamental reading class, which is taught by Mrs. Porter, and that's to really hit our students that are really below grade level, to again, build some of those coding fluency comprehension skills that they can't get in regular English class, just not enough time for everything. So they have an additional class for that. Then I'd like to talk a little bit about our seventh grade reading class, and we use the Chief 3000. We've used this, I think, our sixth year, and it is for all seventh graders. They take this for one semester. Now, this program has been recommended as a year program, but we've found some great success, and it is really based a lot on Lexais, which is a measurement of what level our students and you as well are able to read proficiently. So I'm going to let our student presenters here, Claire and Sophia, they're going to tell you a little bit about, they're currently in the Chief 3000, in the reading class using a Chief 3000. It is taught by Mrs. Alcorn, who is an instructional assistant, but basically a classroom teacher, and she's done an awesome job with that. She's really bought into this and thinks, does a lot with this program. It is individualized for each student, and there are, each student is at a student station and just kind of showing you what it looks like in that classroom setting. Girls, why don't you talk a little bit about, you can step up here, feel free. A little shy. Talk a little bit about, you were in that class, and I know we talked briefly, tell us a little bit about what you feel or how that class is benefiting you as a seventh grade student, even though you're very proficient reader.
A Chief 3000 is probably benefiting me as a student, because it has nonfiction pieces most of the time. And we do have fictional pieces, but I really do like the nonfiction pieces, because it talks about like our world's problems today, or what we did in the past, like environmental problems, economy problems, governmental problems, stuff like that, and I really like that, because I want to go into that stuff one day. And it's benefiting everybody really, because it's keeping them updated and stuff like that. And it's raising their Lexais level. Like, I have friends that they started really low, and then they're up, they're very high right now, like, they love reading. And Mrs. Alcorn, she makes it 100% better, and it benefits everybody really who goes to the class. Race cars do, because Eagles go in January right now. But it really just, everybody in the class loves it that I know of. I'm in the first period of it, and there's 12 of us, and we have like contests and stuff, like, right now we're doing one that's Read to Succeed. It's where the winning period with the most points, when you, every, each time you do an activity, you get 100%, you get three points, or 88%, you get three points, 63%, you get two points.
And 75, two points.
Two points, too. And if you're below 63, you don't get any points. And the most, the period that gets the most points gets a pizza party, and I think she does buy ice cream sandwiches, so. I really like that. I really hope she does, because I was, my class is in second place right now, and sixth period is beating us, because they have a larger number of people in their class right now. But it's really fun. I always enjoyed it, the first time I went in there.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
First, I started off with like a Lexais of 990, now it's like almost 1,200, so, yeah.
And that kind of leads into the, the chart I'm just sharing with you was actually last year's first semester, and you'll see it's by month. And if you look, what we're looking for is for that blue area to grow, because it's shown that they are at the level for career and college readiness, which is where we're at, where our goal is. And as we do that, we're also then reducing those numbers that are progressing. So that was just in a five-month period of time, and again, Ms. Alcorn was teaching that class last year. So we've seen some really, really great growth, and that's why we feel it's beneficial to all students, even those that are fairly proficient. Our focus in that class is nonfiction. She throws in some other pieces occasionally, but that's really the primary purpose for trying to get as much nonfiction in them, at their level, because it does pre-test them. Okay. It's being contrary. We didn't do this when we practiced today. Stayed right there.
Now you know what the rest of us feel like.
Hey, okay, well, okay. Guess I have to be patient sometimes. Another area that we really work with, what we think about reading, is fostering that love for reading, getting, and really hopefully encouraging students that don't think they like to read to actually find a genre, an interest, an area of interest that they would like to read, so we can work with that. We do have a group that we call Advanced Readers, so that's something that Mrs. Newton leads, and it's a group of students that elect to read, and they actually are challenged, they actually analyze books as they read them, and then at the end of the year, we get some grant money from the either High Ability or G T, I'm not sure which, and Mrs. Fields shares, and they actually select the books that they think are needed in our media center. We used to go to Barnes and Noble, and now they did it actually online. But they find those books, and they purchase, and they're given a certain amount of money, and they find those books that they feel would benefit our students, so they have a big piece in that, and that's kind of their end-of-the-year hoopla, so we appreciate that funding. Other activities that just happened in the media center is we use Young Hughes Your Book Awards books. Those are something that are a great resource for our students. They're good books for them to have at their disposal, and we get several copies of those each year. E-books, of course, with downloads and different resources. We do Get Caught Reading, that's just going around when we're doing some of our SSR time and/or finding them in different places. A lot of times it's in the bowl or in the cafeteria, they're carrying their books. Anywhere we can find some time, they can get some extra tickets. We have lunch in the library, book swaps, book tastings, blind dates with a book, book fair, and then they do Q R code hunts with their iPads. So those are just a number of ways that we're trying to engage students in reading in different ways, and Mrs. Newton does a great job trying a variety of incentives. I love the lunch, when they have lunch in the library, you would be very surprised, I was very surprised, I guess, to see some of the students that choose to have to read a book, and then they share that book during lunch and get to go in there, and of course she has a nice, food always speaks, has a nice tree for them as well. But they, and I've sat down with them, and they really do know their book, and so always impressed with that. One of the things that spurred our presentation tonight was we've been hearing about Battle of the Books. Mrs. Peck initiated that this year. It's really a different approach in doing book reports, and I'm sure you've all done a book report in your life at some time, and you may remember those, as hopefully very joyful times, or maybe not. But it's something we've all done, to know how to review a book and know that we've read the book, right? But these young ladies and Mrs. Peck are telling us a little bit about what the Battle of the Books is all about. Who wants to start with telling us what it is?
Okay. So Battle of the Books, I really love it. It's my favorite thing ever. It's the best thing ever. I'm so glad I got all the race cars. Because the race cars only right now do it, because it's kind of like a little pilot thing that we're doing right now. And Battle of the Books is basically where there's 10 books for each period, and each person in that class, they split into teams, okay? And this is the best part, one of the best parts. And we were in the same team together. We had five girl, five girls, and we named ourselves the Golden Girls, because it was, we loved, we loved it. I think you came up with it, actually. She came up with it. It was the best thing ever. And then you make little mottos for it, and then you put each five books you had on the poster, and we got to color it and stuff, and we had to read the books, because reading books is part of the Battle of the Books thing. And, and we go on the, and we go on the tap, our iPads, which we have, and we type in the questions. Once we read the books, we have to type in questions for Mrs. Newton to read in the competition.
Were these your questions? These were Clara's questions?
Yes. Those were the questions. And, yeah, they were, they were homework, basically, and I did mine a little late, because I completely forgot about them. And, but I turned them in, and it was super fun, because we all went down to the library, and we each had our own little section of tables. We were handed a whiteboard and eraser and a marker. And Mrs. Newton was up here, and she had the questions on her iPad, and Mrs. Peck was up there on the whiteboard, and she had little tallies with our team names on it. And so we would each have 10 seconds to answer the question of our book. So like, so-and-so played so-and-so in this book, which book was it? And we would have 10 seconds to answer that, and we would write on our whiteboard, and we would raise it up. If the first table got that wrong, we would set our whiteboards down, and then the second table would go up, and they would do that. If they got it right, they would get a tally. And it would basically do that until we were out of time, and whoever had the most tallies would win. There were, and they, we had jobs in our groups, too. There was team captain, cheerleader, the one that created the poster, and the secretary. I was team captain. You were cheerleader. The other girls, I think we had an extra cheerleader, too. It was, it was super fun. It was the best thing ever. And Battle of the Books, it's better than a book report, really. It is. And it just is.
Clara, why don't you talk about what you felt gained from that, and why you liked it better than the book reports? We already know Sophia does, yeah.
I feel like Battle of the Books is just easier than doing a book report, and it's a lot more, it's a little more challenging, but it's a lot more fun, because you actually get to work with a group and have more fun and more freedom.
Do you want to add? I know they're getting ready for, they do want each nine weeks, right? So the goal is one each nine weeks. And you will have a different way to approach it, a little bit different. The next nine weeks, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so we have a competition every nine weeks, and each group has a kind of like a theme that they are going to hit each nine weeks. The first nine weeks was the posters, that was to encourage their team. This nine weeks, they have to come up with a chant or a motto to kind of cheer before they get to actually start the competition. So it's just kind of a fun way to get them involved with reading. We've done several book reports in the past, and I've never really been thrilled with them, because I always felt like pulling teeth with the students. This year, I've had students come up and said they've already read all four books that they have to read this year. They even said, one student in my second period during the competition, "Did you just trick us into liking reading?" So I've never heard that as an English teacher, so it was really a great opportunity to know that this is actually working for the students. And with the competition, it does get very heated and competitive, which is awesome, because I already have students saying, "Well, I'm going to read the next book, and I'm going to read all the books on the top 10 list, so that way I can win the next competition," which is definitely something I haven't heard in the past. The periods are actually determined by their Lexais. We have four different ability levels. They're in the advanced class, they have the highest Lexais reading, all the way down to like third grade reading. So we're really making sure that we get all students invested in their reading and wanting to read, and we've actually seen a big improvement because of that.
So is this done during class?
Yes.
Okay. So Battle of the Books is done in the classroom, but so are all their team members in their class?
Yes, except for students with I E Ps or 504s. We typically will have a competition during the sport and pride, because I have several inclusion classes.
Okay.
Any other questions about Battle of the Books for these young ladies?
It sounded like competition, competition, that's what makes it the most fun.
Yeah, that probably is. The competition was probably the best part, because the people in our class, I love all the people in our class, because most of them are my friends, and all of them are competitive, and they are very loud, most of them are very, yeah, they're very loud.
Of course they are. Anything else? I know that Mrs. Peck and Mrs. Newton, which she doesn't add, spent quite a bit of time this summer in planning for this, so that they could identify the list of books, and that they could determine how they wanted to organize it, so I think their foreplan has really paid off. We appreciate that. I'm not, I'm not saying that we hope that it catches on, but I think this has been a great pilot for us to try something different. Okay. And I just put together, kind of just, this is kind of everything we have, and how they kind of mesh together, some of them to the middle, we look at the middle and see how they come. We have curriculum that is really geared towards those standards and what our students need to be able to read and do, and then we have just things we try to do to encourage kids just to love reading, and then there's some of the things in the middle that hopefully connect the two, so that's kind of what this diagram is set up to do.
Can I put in a plug for community readers? I've done this forever. We have people from the community actually come in and read to the kids. It's November 20th at 8:30 in the morning, and I know Mrs. Newton is always looking for more people to do this, and it's from 8:30 till about 10:00, and it's fascinating. We all read the same thing, and then we have a group discussion of what the, and this is typically a fiction, sometimes it's nonfiction, but it's really a great opportunity for somebody in the community to come into a seventh and eighth grade classroom and see how excited these kids are about this, and we're setting a good example for them. You know, if adults read, if adults read, then kids will think it's maybe a little cooler, because it makes them look a little older to actually read.
Well, I think part of the premise, too, is that they can tell the students and share with the students how reading has impacted, that what they do and their job and maybe their life, so that was kind of our hopeful, our goal as well. So thank you, Mrs. Kirschner. Oh, I guess I should, well, I didn't, I didn't get back. But anyway, it was our Dr. Seuss saying, the more you read, the more you learn, the more places you go, and that was kind of how, was kind of a cute saying we kind of do once in a while. This was just kind of something we wanted to throw out there, because we did get permission. This would happen to be a student from last year that didn't have a great love for reading, and through the year, I think they were out of town and probably at a basketball event of some kind, and his mom about died when she saw this, and so she took this picture and said, and says, "This is what I have now." So she was really very impressed at the moment, and he really did become a great reader. So with that said, of course, we want to make sure and answer any other questions. I know it's kind of quick, but I know, be brief, be bright.
So reading is a, is it a nine-week?
No, semester.
It's a full semester.
The reading class is a semester, so all of our seventh grades do have that class for a semester.
And an eighth grade, and also it's one?
No, they get it only in seventh grade, that particular reading class.
Okay.
Right. A lot of those others, SSR, a lot of those other activities are all seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
But the class itself is specific to seventh grade.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for having, giving us this opportunity, and thanks to the young ladies for doing a great job presenting. Of course, those are our credits, and Mrs. Newton would let us do this without it.
That was fun.
Okay. Yeah. Fireball.
No. Very, yeah.
It sounds like 1,200, so.
Okay. Back to business. Yeah. I know. So yes, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I still move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Post same sign, motion carries. Any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes for the regular business meeting of 10:08:19, and the executive meeting of 11:05:19, and the special meeting of 11:05:19. The personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera. The approval of the October 2019 claims, 54639 through 54976, and our donation, a donation of $500 for McDonald's to be used for Ann Bommer's computer class. Seeing the consent agenda, I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Post same sign, motion carries. We'll now move on to the action items, beginning with the personnel report. Mr. Hensley.
I was going to see if Clara Sophia wanted to do the personnel report. They did a good job presenting, so too bad they left, I don't know how to run through it, so. But thank you, Madam President, thank you, Board. A few items to go over tonight. We have some certified staff recommendations for employment, so we have Brittany Morgan as an elementary teacher at Eastview. Brittany actually did her student teaching the first semester at Eastview, and did a fantastic job, so she has been able to transition into the classroom there, and it's been a, it's been a great fit so far. The kids already knew her, and so it was, it was easy to slide her in there. And then we also have at Grandview Elementary School, Brooke Murray. Brooke had previously taught for us, took another opportunity to be closer to home. While she was doing that, she was also subbing for us as well, so she had expressed interest that when a position came available, she wanted to come back, so a position came available, and so Brooke was able to, to take that over. So those are the certified staff. The extracurricular, we have Teresa Isaacs as the JV volleyball coach, Jessica Morris. On our agenda, it says girls eighth grade white, it's actually going to be the girls seventh grade red, so. And that just, that just happened in the last day or two, so a little bit, a little bit of change. And then also Devon Phelps as an assistant varsity swim coach, so. Moving down to the second item on the personnel report, so recommendation for the approval of the administrative, and I'm going to lump two and three together, so the administrative and the classified performance pay stipend and salary increases. So you'll see in your packet the memo, and it's recommended that all classified staff members who qualify receive a stipend on their December 10th pay. The qualifications are listed below, so worked 120 or more days in 2018 and 19, evaluated as effective, not on a, not on a non-FMELA leave of absence, and actively employed as of December 1st. Stipend amounts for that, so those, the classified staff working 180 to 225 days, they would receive a stipend of $500. Those that are working 230 to 261 would receive a stipend of $750. In addition to that stipend, employees who were at the top of their pay scale, who did not receive a step increase on July 1st of 2019, will receive an additional stipend of $250. And then all the employees who meet the eligibility above of the stipend on July of 2020, they will get a two-step pay increase, so. For the administrative staff, very similar to the, the teacher contract as far as the anyone making 60,000 or more, they're going to get a 1,500 increase, anyone making under that is 2,000. But it's going to be divided by their days, multiplied, or divided by 185 days, then multiplied by their contracted days. So we have some who work 220, some who work 261, so that's what the calculation is there. Now, administrators who change positions in 2019, 2020, they're going to follow the same applicable formula above, based on their pay rate, with half the amount that's added to their base, and half is added to a stipend. Now, the, the people who did not change, or the administrators who didn't change positions, that's just going to be paid out as a one-time stipend, it's not going to go onto their base. Next, we have the licensed staff salary schedule. So we're recommending that licensed staff who are currently not covered under the collective bargaining agreement have their compensation aligned with the current teacher salary, and that salary is attached on the schedule. Those positions include educational diagnosticians, non-headstart preschool teachers, speech-language pathologists, and speech-language pathologist assistants. Also, we're going to put the social workers and neuroeducators into that as well, so we'll slide them into that pay scale, and taking their years of service and their education and, as part of the requirements for that. The last thing that I have is the Teacher Appreciation Grant, or the TAG Grant, the local funding. So in years past, we've asked the board to make up the difference of the 25% from effective to highly effective, so I'm asking for that again. And additionally, some, based on the state guidelines, there are certain groups that aren't included in that TAG Grant, so the speech-language pathologists, media assistants, we're asking that the board would provide that stipend to those groups as well, so. That's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
So is this, do you know, since you're new to HR, maybe Scott can answer this, is this the first time that we've included some of these other categories of employees in the stipend? Or in the base change?
No, with the TAG Grant, no, but with the salary changes, one area was our social workers. They were, they were really being underpaid for the level of work and what they're doing. We wanted to get those folks aligned to comparable to what the counselors would be making, because they, they are so vital to our student support and family support, so that's new. Typically with the others listed there, we have placed them at a spot on the schedule, but we're just trying to coordinate this with the new teacher increases to try to keep the playing field level with those people who are licensed by the state and work directly with kids and supports.
That's great.
More vital than ever before, probably.
Yeah.
Right.
they, they are so vital to our student support and family support. So that's new. Typically with the others listed there, we have placed them at a spot on the schedule. But we're just trying to coordinate this with the new teacher increases to try to keep the playing field level with those people who are licensed by the state and work directly with kids and supports.
That's great.
More vital than ever before, probably.
Yeah.
Or yeah.
Right.
The need to solo increase these.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now's the time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the Board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the Board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to report items. Superintendent Discussion Group reports, Principal Director reports. Anybody out there have anything they want to share? Okay. Director of Human Resources report.
I just wanted to say thank you to Middle School for the opportunity that the kids get for the Washington DC trip. My son was, was one who was picked to, to help lay the reef. His grandpa is a veteran and also went on the trip with him. So he got to see that. So I really appreciate that. It's a great opportunity. So just want to say thank you to everyone who helps coordinate that. It was something that they'll never forget, so.
Thank you. Director of Finance report, Janie.
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent report, Kim.
I just have one thing. I just want to welcome Chris Cates to our administrative team. I got to spend a couple of days with him last week getting started at Eastview and he's doing a fabulous job. And I just want to make sure he gets recognized for being part of our team.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
You know, I always have something, but I want to commend the Eastview staff to a strong group of teachers who just kept everything moving forward. And I appreciate Kim too. I want to recognize her. She jumped right in and I think I had to pull her away a little bit because she had so much fun getting back in the building. But it was good. I think it's a good experience for Kim, but I just want to commend that staff.
They did a nice job.
I've talked to several of the staff here in the last few days and they're really excited about Chris. And said that committee did a really nice job picking strong finalists for us to pick. So compliments there. Went to most of the Veterans Day programs and I just think it's really nice what our kids do and our staff to recognize our heroes. So wanted to thank all the, all the teachers and kids for the work that's done there.
Thank you. For the good of the cause, I thought I would start out recognizing the Red for Ed Day. I'm not sure the, how well it's been publicized to the public. I know within the school community, it's pretty well-known. And it is a day that's happening on November 19th and it's where educators across the state, and actually, I just read today that other states are participating in this as well. I think I saw a map in Wisconsin and Kentucky, maybe Illinois. And where they have an opportunity to be together in numbers, in great numbers, to try to get a message across to our legislators that there are a lot of burdens placed on teachers, on corporations to continue to give and give with mandates and testing. And it is reducing the number of teachers that go into teaching. It is impacting what teachers get to do in the classroom. And I, I was hoping that Scott would share a little bit more about the Red for Ed Day. I think there's a general feeling among the Board members to that we want to support teachers as they choose, those that choose to go to the State House to express their feelings to legislators and that we as a Board support their efforts. So I just wanted to make mention of that. And I was hoping, Scott, you could share some more about that.
Well, and appreciate Bob for placing some information in the newspaper this week and we've sent it up to our families in various other ways. But, you know, one of the thing is we watched, you know, when our teachers were using one of their personal days to make the decision to go, about a third of our staff had already committed to that last week. And of course, we were watching that because we reached a critical mass where, hmm, even with all of us getting back in the classroom to teach, the numbers don't add up because we don't have 75 people who can cover the classrooms. And I knew that number would grow. And so, you know, I certainly, I talked with Leslie about it. And when you look at public education today and a lot of the mandates and a lot of the political side of, I don't want this to be viewed as something we're doing political. It's supporting our teachers. Because the profession, in my opinion, has never been harder. And we ask more and more of our teachers each year. And just the mandates that are placed on us each year, I have a binder full from just this last legislative session. And it's the trickle-down effect. As much as I try to protect the teachers and their ability administrators, it's just, that's what happens. So we want to send that message, you know, that we want to provide this time for our teachers to go. And I hope that all of our teachers can attend that day. And sometimes people think, "Well, what about the support staff?" Or the folks who, you know, aren't teachers, they aren't losing a day's pay or anything. That was a concern one person had. These teachers are going to be making this day up outside of their contract time. So they will have a day of professional development that we have to recapture from the February 17th day. So I want the public to keep that in mind, that our principals will be working with their buildings to make up that full day of professional development as well, which will happen outside of their regular contract day. So I don't know if people always understand that. So, you know, I support our teachers and I know this Board does and our administrative team does as well. And I think they have a powerful voice and I hope our legislators listen. And we don't have enough educators at the table making some of these decisions, so.
Well, and I want to thank the administrative team for, and Scott, for making the decision to go ahead and support our teachers.
Yes, absolutely.
Just kind of a sidebar to that, we will be, and it'll be before our next board meeting in December, Senator Jean Leising will be coming to our schools December 9th. We look forward to having her. She's going to spend an afternoon at an elementary and either middle or high school and then have an opportunity to speak with Board teachers, some other individuals pulled together. So I'll be eager to hear how the Red for Ed Day goes and just what comes out of that so that we can share that with Senator Leising to demonstrate to her that, that there's some strong needs to see a few changes on the state level. So I just wanted to mention that.
And that roundtable will be from 3:45 to 5:00. We're still working on location. It may be here, but it may be at the Career Center, so we'll let you know. But if you can be there, please let Cindy know. I also asked Amanda Sleet, teacher junior president, to see if she could find one person from each building to be a representative to sit at that roundtable as well. So she seemed very appreciative of that and Cindy.
December 9?
December 9. She's going to visit from 1:00 to 3:15-ish at our schools and then at the roundtable. So I appreciate Leslie reaching out to her and getting that side of it organized, so.
Should be interesting.
Other thoughts?
The retired teachers are also involved with the Red. Something was sent out, I'm the president of the local chapter, and they said, "Please remember that retired teachers, we get a stipend called a 13th check, which really isn't a 13th check. We're doing volunteer work and we can send in our hours and they have to be school-related, community-related. And it's not much, but it's, it's a give-back for all of the hours that we gave as classroom teachers and never got paid for and are continuing that on beyond our retirement. And that's another thing that the legislature wants to take away. And it's not a whole lot of money at all. It's like $450. So it's really, it's, we don't do it for the money, but it's nice to have the recognition. And, and the whole thing with the Red for Ed, it's a matter of respect for what we do and a matter of respect for our education, the fact of how much we care about our kids. Kids are not shrunken adults and a lot of times they forget about that. And Leave It To Beaver is long gone. And if they don't believe it, then they ought to come into a regular classroom and see what these teachers deal with every day. It's a, it's a, it's the best job and it's also the worst job of any given day. And I think our legislators need to understand the nuances of that so they can make some better decisions and spend their money in better ways. We spend an awful lot to pay people to make really bad tests and then we wonder why teachers, we can't pay teachers. We got the stuff, we need the people. Because without the relationships and without the people, we, we don't function. And they forgot that a long time ago, unfortunately.
Thank you, Ann. Anything else? With that, I will request a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I agree. I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Thank you.